Let the dog. Good evening, this is a call to meeting to order, this is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in the Town House Selectmen's Office, March 26, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Kristen Rivers is from the Wilberham Hampton time, okay. Before we get started, I want to make two, two brief announcements. Number one, the government study committee has completed their report that's available in the Town Hall, they're having an open forum on April 4th for anyone who wants to ask questions or learn more. And the other thing is that the, this is directed to people who have Spectrum cable, does not, does not affect internet or affect phone or anything else you have, but the Spectrum television cable. The license expired on March 17th, people have asked about that, and the board has signed a 90 day extension. And we've hired an attorney to negotiate with Spectrum. The only thing that's to hold up right now is Spectrum has yet to file an application for a license renewal. So we'll see how that progresses. We have any minutes?
Yes.
Tons of minutes.
Five of them.
Five of them.
That's the executive session.
Okay, well, executive session of January 2nd, 2024.
I was wanting last week, we revised.
We revised that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session of February 20th, 2024. This is also an executive session with negotiating for the police contract.
Second without release. Sorry, motion to approve without release.
Yeah.
Sorry.
If you want to do the, the last one Craig, you should have amended to without release.
Without release, yeah.
You want me to amend the first one?
Please.
Without release?
Without release. So Ron, we have a motion for February 20th, 2024 without release.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. February 26th, 2024. This is police chief's contract.
We completed it that night?
We completed, but we didn't vote on it yet.
Well?
No, we haven't, I don't believe it's completed, and, but, but we didn't vote on it. So.
When are you? When are we gonna vote on it?
We're gonna vote on it once we get the both contracts done.
All under at the same time?
Yeah. I think that's the way to do it, right?
Alright, motion to approve without release.
Two pages, hold on.
Hold on over. Way to save paper, Warren, nice job.
Duplex printer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
February 26th, 2024, this is the police officer's contract. Negotiations.
I do note that on the, some of the other ones, we mentioned the board's position, and then we get down to Quinn. And I thought we had a position, it's just not articulated there. I.e. we weren't in agreement.
Well, that, that's what we, but that's the, that's, it should say the board's position is.
They talked about when they, they were against that.
We're against that, right, right.
So are they because you had that kind of.
Okay, so under.
Or you just put that the, the board is not in agreement with this.
Actually, yeah.
Under Quinn.
I'll make the motion to approve without adjustment.
Yeah, without release.
Without release, thank you.
Second.
All in favor? And this is the minutes for the meeting last night.
I saw you scribbling away, it was great job.
Yeah, thank you.
But I think when I leaned over said, hey, you should take minutes though.
Abbreviate, they're abbreviated.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, typos and you're done.
Really?
No.
I wouldn't be surprised, it's, you know.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Here we go. We have the Mass Audubon Society on, are they on Zoom?
Yes. Yes, I'm here on Zoom.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
What can we do for you?
Well, yeah, first just wanted to introduce myself to the, I, I know, I know John, since I've been coming to the select board meetings prior to COVID with some frequency to, to update the town on what was happening at, at Laughingbrook Wildlife Sanctuary. But just wanted to introduce myself to the two of you who I haven't met, and who's watching, that I am, what, the point person for Mass Audubon for Laughingbrook. And we really, you know, we want to be connected, we kind of got, we got a little disconnected during COVID, our main interaction with the town over the last few years has been with the MVP project. So we have been involved in working with the town on, on that. But just wanted to come back and, and one, give you a few updates and also talk to you about a couple of projects that we're thinking about at Laughingbrook that couldn't, couldn't involve the town. So that the, the first update is a, a few years ago, Laughingbrook got hit pretty hard by what's now called spongy moths, they used to be called gypsy moths. And they killed many hundreds of trees at Laughingbrook, mostly oak trees that are now standing dead oak trees. And so we've been assessing as they've been, you know, rotting a bit over the last few years and getting less stable, we've been assessing the safety hazard. And we were out there a few weeks ago and have decided that we're going to need to be closing the sanctuary with a little more frequency based on wind speeds or heavy snow or heavy rain. So you will notice that the gate will be closed with a sign out front that says due to hazardous conditions, we're, we're keeping it closed, we're just, we're concerned about, you know, the wind normally winds in the woods, there's hazards with that. But we're, we're just especially concerned because of just the large number of dead trees that are along the trail system currently, that's really far more than you would normally see. And we don't want anybody to get hurt out there on the trails. So welcome input on that, as you see that we're closing it and just feel like it's, if we're being overly cautious, or if you have any input, we, we welcome that as time goes on, we're just starting, just trying to figure out our protocols now and when, when's the best time to close. So that's the one update I wanted to pass along. And then the other, the other, we have a couple of projects that we're starting to plan there, some ecological management projects. Our, our goals with these projects are usually around wildlife habitat, particularly around rare species and trying to improve habitat for those species. And also trying to manage our forests for the changing climate and make them more resilient to the changing climate. So we are, we're looking at a project and we're really just wanting to present this idea as, just kind of planting some seeds, we're, we're not, we're not full speed ahead on it yet. But we're looking at a project that's on the west side of the sanctuary. If you were, if you're at the school, the elementary school and you, and you head back towards the brook and cross the brook, there's a parcel there that the town owns that is abutted to the northeast and south by Mass Audubon property, kind of juts into the sanctuary a bit. And the, the project that we're looking at is on that slope, that west foot facing slope. And the project area is both on Mass Audubon land and if possible would extend onto town land. So one idea that we're floating out there that we're interested in, if the town is interested in creating a, potentially a management easement or a management agreement with Mass Audubon, that we could do some habitat management extending onto town land. And we're not yet at the point, we're not officially requesting this, we don't need to, and we don't need to move it forward, I don't think, it's more just a time to discuss it and think about if this is something that we should even consider. We're not far enough along in our project yet to actually be implementing anything. So that, the management, and just one last thing, what the management would look like is it would involve some cutting of trees. So we have, there's an area up there that has some large pitch pines and it's just a little bit of a, has potential there to create an ecosystem, a pitch pine ecosystem with, with dense blueberries in the understory. Something that you might see more in Eastern Mass, but is a pretty rare habitat here in this part of the state. And it seems like an opportunity for us to, to create that here, and it's valuable to a number of bird and other species that would take advantage of that. So that's why we're interested, it feels like that's a particularly good site due to the existing pitch pines and site conditions that are there on that west slope. So, yeah, we just wanted to propose that as just an idea, float it out, see if the town, you know, would, would consider something that would, that would be a, a partnership in that project and allowing us to manage land there owned by the town.
When you say rare, are you saying rare to this area, meaning it's not normally here, or rare that it should be protected?
Yeah, so not, well, both, so when we, when we protect rare species, we're often looking at state listed rare species. So those are oftentimes species that are not federally listed as endangered or threatened. So they may have larger populations elsewhere in the country, but in the state, they're listed as either endangered or threatened. And we work to protect them in the state because of their small numbers. Occasionally, there are some federally listed species, but that's not what we're talking about here. Like, for, the bald eagle, of course, was a, you know, classic example of a federally listed endangered species that a lot of effort in Massachusetts went into restoring them here. Primarily, we're, we're focused on state, state listed species, so they're, they are rare in the state.
I don't know if that really answered my question about what we're doing in there, you know?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Well, you, you said the, 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 the pines and then the blueberries or whatever were rare, so I was just wondering, is it just rare to this area because it's not abundant, or is it rare that we should be worrying about protecting it?
I'm sorry, as far as the natural, yeah, so the community or the ecosystem there is rare to this area, right, it's more common in, in Eastern Mass or on the Cape, you would see like a lot of pitch pine stands with blueberries. But it's not as common in this part of the state, and so that, that diversity here really would, would create some habitat that we don't have a lot of in this area.
So you don't, you don't have a plan yet, right? I mean, you're just thinking about it?
Exactly, it's just, so we're, you know, it's something we're hoping to do, and obviously we could just do it on Mass Audubon's part of this. But that particular area, that west slope is shared, the ownership is shared with Mass Audubon and the town. So we thought the best potential of it would, would be to include the town as a partner in that project. So as we get more information and more detail, we can definitely share, share that is what the plan more specifically would look like, but just wanting to plant the seeds now.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I can't speak for the board, there's really no plan for us to, to decide on, but I, I think it's fair to say that the town and, and Mass Audubon have a long and friendly and helpful relationship in a number of topics. And I'm sure we could work something off, you need to use our land.
Great, well, that's great, yeah, look forward to being in touch more about that and as, as it develops, we'll share. There's funding, is, you know, funding is always the question with these projects, so we're, there's some funding available through the, through the state and through federal agencies that we're looking at. So if, you know, once we get a little bit further along and start to apply for those, we'll, we'll get you into the, into the process.
Any other questions for the board? All right, thank you very much, thank you for updating us.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you, you too.
Jonah.
Shared health services update.
Do you want us to come on up?
Sure. Probably feel the power emanating.
It's the first time having a meeting in here.
All right, what do we got here?
Usually it's virtual.
For, for, for.
All right, what are we doing?
So.
Go ahead.
So for the crowd, you know, you are.
Hi, I'm Tim McCall, the Public Health Director for the Eastern Handed Shared Public Health Services, covering Long Meadow, Wilberham, Hampton and Munson. And with me I have Lynn, Lynn Simmons, my Town Manager for Long Meadow.
The power behind the phone.
Well, Lynn, Lynn Simmons, one of my colleagues in the Hampton County Retirement Board, typical.
Yep. Spent a lot of time on that.
Still want to know how they got such a good price at the school, we saw that budget last night, they went up 4%. How? We go up nine every time.
I'm not following.
We were looking over the, the regional school budget last night.
Oh.
And their kind of retirement contribution went up like 4. something percent, like, how? Usually it's the max every time.
Yeah, we're, we certainly are.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so just some quick updates to kind of recap this last year, I think it was just over a year ago, when I was before you, kind of discussing the FY23 budget and the grant and what it was covering. So after that happened, the state did a, actually they did a full audit air assessment of all the shared services throughout the state. That included us submitting hundreds of documents of everything we did the past year, tons of meetings, questionnaires and surveys. The state contracted out to a third party consulting company to do this, and that was between July and August. What we got back was that the state was really satisfied with the work that we were doing with such a low budget for the area and the population that we covered. So they amended our contract and added $160,000 for a total of $393,000 for FY24. So that increases our, now our new baseline budget, and the contract is extended to 2033. I provided you with a document of the projected shortfall for this year, along with FY25 proposed budget. As you can see, we're still short. Again, the state reassured us that they're going to do this audit again, and I, my coordinator with the state has been pushing to get us additional funding again for hopefully September to make another amendment. So ideally, this number would hopefully come down again for FY25, but that's the projected, and you can see this year's overage, then the breakdown based on the population. For each town.
So. By shortfall, you mean the difference between what your budget is and what they gave you?
Yeah, yeah, so on that spreadsheet, you can, it basically just shows how much it takes to really run this health department, and then at the bottom is the total costs that it takes to run it, what the grant covers. And you can see the difference in. The grant from 23 to 24.
What, what did we vote last year?
I think it was like, were we 11 short, I mean, the number came back different.
Different, but, but, but I guess what I'm asking is, didn't, didn't we put money in our budget last year?
No.
Okay.
No. We're gonna wait and see. I see, the biggest difference seems to be the admin support, did we add another person with that?
Not, that's actually a line item that the state gives us, so with that admin support, we can add in up to 15% of the grant. And we can basically use that to put into any other expenses, they give us a list and it basically covers everything under our day to day expenses and even salaries.
What are other expenses?
I'll have to double check that, but these are, again, online items that the state has outlined on what we can use, they have literally all their expenses and has a list of miscellaneous.
Right, I just see, you know, other one from 0 to 5,000 to 8,000, so 6% increase this year.
Yep.
I mean, and I see what you're saying, the admin support could be kind of a catchall, is there a chance that you wouldn't expend every dollar at the end of the year?
Um, I, no. The main reason is the salaries.
No, no, I mean, some of these other, like Craig just said, the other expenses.
Yeah.
You know, you got 5,000 for whatever, you might spend four.
Right, sure, yeah, and again, that doesn't really make up for what.
No, it doesn't, but I mean, should we?
It's a valid question.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, so you're proposing this, and what happens if at the end you close your books and we've overpaid a projected shortfall?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Will you just apply it the next year, would you be able to do that?
Yeah, we would, we'd come up with some calculation that benefits all the communities here based on the same percentage, yeah.
The easiest thing would be just give us a credit for it next year.
Yeah, absolutely, we haven't, I don't think been faced with that yet, just because it's been growing so quickly, we haven't kept up with, we've spent every budgeted dollar that has come in. So, but that's a valid, valid point. And I think the breakdown of other expenses is something that also can be provided. My guess is it includes a lot of your printing costs and things of that nature, because I don't see anything in here that would cover that.
I think it's pretty clear that 80% of your cost is personal, right, you know, and so the rest is, gosh. What do you want to call it, support to run the department, basically. And I think I can speak for the board, we think the department is running great, we do. You know, the interaction between our people and Finn have been terrific, we have no complaints.
Great.
So, thank you.
I think it's been a huge benefit, I mean, certainly for Long Meadow, before we started this, we had 1.25 people. And now we've grown it actually into a professional health department. And we, you know, we started these conversations in the middle of a pandemic and we were all feeling the fact that we didn't have health staff, we were all wearing dual hats. So I don't ever want to be in that position again, and just the immunizations that the health nurse has been able to put together has been tremendous, so. I mean, the, the Long Meadow number here, to pay for a full functioning health department for $33,000, and that's the best deal.
Right, yeah.
What's with the, what's with the intermunicipal agreement?
So.
You gonna sign that again?
Yes.
Cause we're up, right, three years ago.
Is it three years?
There's a three years was supposed, well, three years was supposed to be covered.
Yeah, three years, we're still actually working through the, the actual final draft of the document, and surprisingly, we're still ahead of the game with a lot of shared services. But, so, all the town administrators and managers met about a month ago. Basically, there was some conflict between the IMA and the bylaws that we have. After some feedback from Town Council, they basically recommended to kind of combine the two, just because there was some conflicting language.
There was no two, two documents?
Yeah, yeah, so we have one single document now. I will say that I think the biggest change is that there's gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate the idea of the governing board, and it's gonna be a governing body, and that would consist of the town administrators and managers. Who will meet on, as if they were the board, but. Those are really the two main changes.
The goal is to wrap up that IMA discussion before the end of this fiscal year.
So we're doing nothing with this tonight, this is the draft, draft still?
Just a draft.
And you mentioned a month ago, so really was Brian in that loop or is that still Bob at that time?
That was the, the last one.
Brian was at the meeting.
One of my first days.
Yeah.
First, you know, one of the first days.
So you said board members, it says here to select board of each member of town will appoint two representatives?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
So it'd be more than just a, same town administrator? So maybe the chair of the board and, is that how it's gonna work out?
I, I believe we.
That's what we're proposing to get rid of that.
Oh, you're preferring to get rid of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had some conversations about how that actually logistically would work, we felt like it was another layer that would just add confusion. So we, the working group has been doing a great job communicating, we thought we could just keep that going.
Is there any chance, I know we talked about the expansion of it, is there any chance of expanding a district?
That's, that's in here, so the district.
I know there is that, I'm saying, do you have any?
Yeah, I, I, no communities approached me, I don't know if anyone's approached Finn yet, I don't think we'd say no, we'd entertain that conversation to see how we could grow without impacting the existing communities.
But we talked about it, I know we're going through the same thing with the regional dispatch, would there be, I mean, is that something the state is pushing for, they like bigger regional work in that area? Would they increase the grant more than the actual cost per state, because they like the fact that you're doing more for that type of thing? Is that an avenue that might drop our cost because the state is going to throw money at you to make the system bigger? On the other hand, you don't want to make it so big you can't afford.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, we cover like area wise, it's like almost 100 square miles, so it's, it's a lot of ground to cover. I think right now it's, you know, 43,000 people total. But yeah, if we were able to get another community on board that already has, you know, was a staff member, an inspector, or a part-time public health nurse, that the grant could help.
Right, it's gotta be within the range, you're not picking up sand as well because you're gonna drive 40 miles, right, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Thanks for getting there.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming over.
Yeah, thanks. Good to see you in person.
Yeah, this is incredible office, thank you, look at that TV.
About the same as mine, so we're all in the same.
Tyandone Water District presentation.
I don't know, we got Brian on here first, or, I thought it should be good, I mean, that water thing is gonna take a while.
Good.
Wow.
Wow. Have a cookie, they're over there.
Wow. That's not very nice.
No, it wasn't intended to be.
Yeah, I see that, I don't even know you.
You will.
Well, it'll get better. Once you know him.
Do you want to do Brian next, because obviously he's, he's.
Well, I figured he's gotta be quick and that way he's been really concentrated, I mean, John's gotta go.
Okay, the one question I have, Brian, you got two different addresses here. Tyandone, hold on, we're gonna do this, change of managers here. Come on up, come on up, come on up, don't be afraid.
Oh, trust me, I'm not afraid.
You got. On the, your resident, is it Tolland?
Yes, sir.
Tolland, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then, and I just wondered, because on the receipt it says Enfield, is that an old address or something?
Enfield, I've never lived in Enfield.
Way in southwest 55 Taylor Road, Enfield.
5555 Taylor Road, that is the corporate office for USA, but.
Oh, okay, alright, alright, they got your, they got your payment on behalf of you, oh, payment on behalf of, so they made the payment of the fee to the ABCC?
Yes, sir.
Where's your address?
My address is in Tolland, Connecticut.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, I thought they had to reside in the same state.
Did somebody came up with this?
I thought we went through that with Village Market.
Do they have, the person did live in, in this state?
Right, they had to change managers because the first person they brought lived in Connecticut.
That I'm not sure of.
Who is the current person? And I got pretty surprised, I always thought, I always thought it was you.
Yeah, Tommy Frommatt?
Yeah, Tommy Frommatt's the one that's on here.
Yes, sir, I know.
I don't think I even saw that guy.
No, I don't, I don't know where he lives, Mr. Flynn, unfortunately.
It's only good, I always mention that because it came up, right, with the, they had to change.
We had to, we had to push the hearing off for Village Market because of that.
It was gonna be one of the two owners, and they lived in Suffield.
Right, then they needed to have somebody live in state, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
I don't remember how it went down, but I, I remember that from the, your license transfer, no, I don't know. Is it critical, do you mind if we look into that?
No, god, no, please. No problem at all.
We want to do, we don't want you to have to send it off to Boston to them, you know.
Yeah, whatever you guys need to do, no worries.
We're gonna put it off a week, we're gonna put it off a week, okay, just so we can figure it out.
All right.
We'll let you know, look, Brian, will you let him, would you try to straighten it out tomorrow or something, and let them know one way or the other?
Sounds good, look forward to seeing you next time.
Okay.
All right, take care.
Gosh, told you that'd be easy, done.
I have to accuse myself, see him with the butter, okay, let's see.
Are you really?
Well, they got, they have a little stretch of, you know.
I thought it was not the end of, by what's his name? Yeah, by. Yeah, by, um.
I believe we bought that land over there. Yeah, we bought that one, but I don't, I don't think, I think he still owns, I think he's in between us and them.
Yeah, yeah, all the swamp is.
Where the swamp is, yeah, we, we own all the swamp.
Do you? Wow, that must be great land.
We're raising alligator, alligator meat for sale. Okay. Ty and Bond, are you there? Come in, Ty and Bond.
Uh, I'm here, Pete Felinsky, uh, but.
There you go. All right, good. Is he gonna give a, does he give a presentation?
I thought so.
Yeah. I don't think it's a formal presentation, but Jen, general leader in the discussion of the, of the ninety percent submission.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so.
Yeah, there she is, okay.
Yep, yep, so we submitted to you on the fifteenth, the ninety percent drawings and, um, cost estimate, and, um, after that, I heard from, uh, um, John Plaster that the town had submitted onto the, uh, May Town meeting, instead of doing the whole project as we currently present, uh, in the ninety percent. Um, it's just the pump station and then, um, connecting services to the existing system. Um, so our ninety percent reflects the whole project in its entirety, including our amendment work, so, um, I think that's one thing at a meeting, knowing, you know, if that's how we want to proceed to final, um, bid documents, is to just proceed with that, just getting confirmation. And it would be, uh, six, uh, homes is our understanding that are connect, that would be connected to the existing main. That's, uh, one thing we'd like to discuss, and then, um, we also had provided some information, um, to John Plaster and other people, um, members of the commission, um, just to give them an idea of a recent plumbing clo, code, uh, change. Currently, our, um, project doesn't include a bathroom, um, but there's currently a change in the plumbing code requiring a single unisex bathroom. Um, the local plumbing inspector can make a determination to deem it unnecessary and, um, but they could ask the, you know, the district, the water district, to, um, seek a variance from the state. Um, I think we would be well positioned, um, saying that we don't have really any area down there, um, to do the septic system. Um, and the town doesn't have existing, um, sewage, um, so we would be in a good, good, uh, position to get granted the variance. Um, but, uh, something that we just would like to see if you could speak with your plumbing inspector, I think it'd be best if it came from you guys, um, and let us know, um.
I'm, I'm more than happy to sit in on that conversation and, and I'm even happy to reach out to, uh, uh, to, uh, is it Dennis? Yeah, Dennis JP, uh, directly, but I, I sort of think I'd start with you anyways. Uh, you probably have the best relationship with the, with your plumbing inspector. If you don't, then I'm, I'm more than happy to, to, to be that person who gives them a call.
At the pump, at the pump station?
Yeah.
At the.
It's a new change.
The thing you have to have at the transfer station, too.
Yeah, it's, it's got the whole industry by surprise, but, uh, but it, it's really hitting the water industry, uh, because they are specifically identified as, uh, and, as of December of twenty twenty-three, basically, you know, a couple of months ago, uh, the plumbing code was changed. And, uh, it, it's just come to everyone's attention, and I'm telling you, everybody, I mean, water, the Mass Water Works is just putting out a, uh, an announcement, uh, this week relative to that, putting everybody sort of on notice, and, and going to, to the state to get a variance is not desirable, I mean, because, uh, I've seen, I've seen things go both ways with, with those folks out there. And Eastern Mass thinks it's, uh, straightforward, just to throw a bathroom in there. We're in a well field. I mean, I, I think as far as, uh, as a, a determination, you, you don't want to put a bathroom in a septic system in a well field, uh, nor are you allowed to. Um, but, but you could, uh, you know, you know, it could save that, uh, maybe you, you put in something with a tight tanker, or, yeah. If, if that's really what you're up to, or, or maybe some alternative.
But there's no, but there's no employees there.
There's no employees there, but that's, that, that's the, that's the plumbing code change, John. It basically says, I'm not, it now, it actually specifies unoccupied buildings, it's requiring at least a single unisex bathroom. We agree, I mean, I, that's, uh, you know, this is certainly something that, uh, doesn't make any sense. Uh, particularly since, uh, Hampton and most of these communities out here in Western Mass don't have a sewer outside their, their, these, uh, pump stations. Uh, so you, you don't really have a place to go to with it. Um, we, we'd like to start with, with Dennis, and before we make it, 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 it is, there's.
I worry about the hay bards up on the farm now, are they gonna require it like that?
I approached the, uh, our building.
Wendell.
Wendell, building.
Wendell.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, building commissioner a week ago. She gave him a printout of what was sent to me, and he said he was gonna follow through with that.
Okay.
So that's where we are right now. So it's been a week.
So, the costs here for the ninety percent construction that you have, was that the initial project, or is this the expanded project with the additional homes?
The expanded, including the amendment one. Yep, so it's the full build-out.
It's not as bad as I thought it was, is it? I mean, it's still expensive, but it's not expensive like I thought we were looking at.
Yep, yeah, so if, uh, if you're just talking construction costs for the pump station and the distribution system, it's about two million dollars. When you put in, um, general conditions for general contractor and subbid, um, you'd get close to two point five million, and then if you include all of the, um, additional fees, so our design that we've already, um, been conducting, construction fee services, contingency, um, you know, you're at the three point six million or so.
Yeah, I think it's realistic to say that the construction is two point five billion. I wouldn't call it two, uh, because those general conditions, they're, they're a part of the estimate. Continuencies, of course, are not, but you, you, I've actually experienced a little bit of both in, in recent bids. They're, they're not, they're not, uh, you know, a year ago, we would've said, hey, they, they're coming in very, very high. Uh, now we're getting some realistic numbers on particular work. Uh, water main work was one of them, that, uh, we, we had recent bids on, that, uh, I was pleasantly surprised that they weren't, uh, as elevated as, as we've seen in the past. Um, but that said, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a number that's been increasing as we keep adding services on there. Uh, there, Jen probably should point out that there are a couple of services there in particular that alone are, are almost projects. Uh, I, I think there were two addresses that.
Yeah. Yeah, thirty, thirty-five Scantic and twenty-nine Scantic are excessively long services. The houses are quite set back from the road, and in particular, one twenty-nine, um, they have two, um, covert crossings, stream crossings, so, you know, that adds to prices, those two in particular. You, you know, we did some back of the napkin, um, calculations, um, just to try to, well, not back the napkin, we used our actual ninety percent numbers, but, yeah, the thirty-five, yeah, thirty-five Scantic was on the order of magnitude of like sixty grand, and and one, um, one twenty-nine Scantic is on the order of magnitude of seventy-five grand, just due to its length, restoration, driveway, the H D D drill that you'll probably have to go underneath those streams with for, um, one twenty-nine, so those we would recommend, um, looking into and announce treatment.
Now, we talked about, we talked about the phase A and the phase B. Are those homes inside the phase A that is the pipe, the, the ones that the pipe runs in front of now?
Um, only thirty-five is, that one is lengthy, um, but it not as bad as one twenty-nine, cause one twenty-nine would be on the new main.
So here's my question.
One twenty-nine Scantic?
Yep.
Or?
Correct, yep, Scantic.
We went that far around. I thought it stopped at one oh four.
Uh, no, the last house is one thirty and one twenty-nine, and then one forty is the last one.
By the brook was amended. That's down by the brook?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, no.
So here's my question, is it, phase A is still gonna cost like two and a half million, right?
Well, I thought we re, redefined phase A to be pump house upgrade, and the ones on the line are ready. That was gonna be the phase.
So the, so the.
The pump house number is the pump house number, no matter which way you go, right?
Yes, the pump house into what Peter had spoken to, those, the twenty percent subbid and general conditions, um. So on just the pump station alone, it's just under about nine hundred thousand dollars for the pump station alone, and then, um, I did pull together, um, a cost estimate for the, um, the six services that are adjacent to the existing main, and that's about a hundred and fifty grand.
We're still looking at like a one point one, maybe?
Well, I think, yeah, the numbers jumped up a little bit. We were kicking it around before, you know, we thought the pump station, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we were in the seven, five, seventy.
Pump station alone was, was six thi, yeah, six hundred and fifty thousand.
Right. So now you're saying the pump station's around nine hundred?
Yes, with, with general conditions.
It's about six stations of which is.
Yep.
So.
So I think we do some sections now, we have multiple contingencies.
Well, that's the, uh, probably in the engineering fees, we're probably on top of that, so.
Well, yeah, those ones are at the bottom, that's not included in that.
Okay, if we were talking phase A to be pump station upgrade and the houses that are along the current piping system, what's, without the expansion part, which obviously.
Yeah, without, yeah, without con, contingency or our expenses or anything like that, it's about one point one.
All right, and then add on contingency and engineering.
Hearing on top of that.
And that's phase A without technical, so speak, expanding the system.
Correct, without pipeline, additional pipeline or the additional services adjacent to the new pipeline.
All right, we talked, we felt we had the four fifty range left over.
In our book.
And we were kicking around, if we're gonna go out for a bond for this, what number do we need? And we were thinking it was in the four range, and now we're thinking it's in the seven?
Well, the, the, depends on how we wanna present this now, I mean, we're gonna obviously have to do it in pieces, you know, when are we gonna do the next phase B? In the fall or next year?
Well, no, no sooner than the fall, but then, at that point, maybe we're gonna apply free cash to it as well. And maybe a transfer from, but I think this is gonna impact, if we get this done over the summer, we save on testing fees. And the pump house has to be done anyhow.
True.
I mean, eighty percent of the cost is the pump house upgrade, which has to be done.
I just consider we're gonna be spending more money in the long run by doing these phases.
I don't.
By doing multiple steps.
I don't know, do you, Peter, do you think that, um, I mean, ex, extending the system later, should that be done now, or is it as easy as just basically, here's the end of the thing, we're gonna be adding more pipe? And just like we did when we brought it down to the townhouse?
I think if you have a contractor come in, they're gonna give you a bulk discount to do it all, rather than having two separate, two separate projects.
Yeah, except the, the, what we're talking about here is contractor-wise, coming off the road, the worst ones they have are the ones that cross the road, and most of the ones that are down by the side, all they're doing is, whatever, valving off and going to the house.
There's gonna be some cost impact to breaking it up, uh, you know, there, there always is, going with two contracts instead of one. So, but, but I don't think it'd be, it's huge, it's probably a, a ten percent type number on, on that, I, uh, that particular portion. So if, if you break out a million dollars worth, you're probably gonna, it's probably gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars extra in that, in that neighborhood, just because you broke it up into another contract, and you're paying another person's overhead profits and all that stuff that are built into it. Um, I did wanna add, and, and maybe this strays a little bit from it, but, uh, I do wanna put in an expression of interest with, uh, the, the community, uh, one-stop program. Um, you're probably gonna be at least eligible for a rural, uh, development grant, which is up to five hundred thousand dollars. And I think, I, I think we can make a good case relative to that, but it's just, well, I don't think it changes your decisions, but I, I think we put in for, for some monies anyways, relative to the Rural Development Fund. I don't think, uh, it'd qualify for a Mass Works grant, which would be more money, but, uh, but the Rural Development Fund is, is a little bit more wide open because you're expanding the system, and, and enlarging some portion of it, and it's, provides some commu, community development, uh, you know, basically adding people to the system, uh, it'll, it'll be eligible, and, and if, if there's a certain need to it, so.
What about, well, Peter, what about the point that we're also addressing, as D E P has said, there are PFAS concerns. Does that make us a little more, does that help our case with that funding?
Always, always does. Emergence, anything that falls into the emergent contaminants category, that would be, uh, that one. Uh, it's certainly, uh.
When do you think we might, when do you think we might know about something like that if we apply?
Uh, these, these applications, the expression of interest is due by the end of April, uh, the app, full applications are due the first week in June, and we don't find out till September. So th, these are things that also generally can be, uh, applied to monies that are spent. So again, if you move forward with projects, uh, they.
We could reimburse, so we could do, not almost a state house note, saying that what if it came through, we didn't have to borrow the full thing, basically, yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, I, I think we apply for anything we can, uh, in the, you know, Brian, Brian would, uh, uh, so we could work with him, but on, uh, I'm pulling together the application stuff, and the, the expression of interest is writing up a, a, a pretty paragraph, but the, the application process will take a little bit more effort, but, but I think we apply for things that we're eligible for.
So kind of the question that I think that is before the board is, A, we have, if we decide on a funding number, B, is this gonna be something, as Dick has talked about, he doesn't wanna go out to bond yet until we find out what our fault? You know, okay, we apply four fifty from the remaining ARPA money, we're gonna need, let's be conservative, say a million dollars, you know? And we might be able to get half of that back from one stop, you're saying?
I'm saying we're gonna, we're gonna go after the full five hundred thousand dollars in, in the one-stop program.
Fine.
We're not counting on it, but we are, we are gonna go after it.
I think Dick would say that for five hundred, you don't bond for that, you know, take it out a couple of payments, like a truck, basically.
And this is just for phase one?
Phase A.
Yeah.
And then when you get to phase two, which I think, I mean, that's just basically his distribution system number there, I think, is all the, the bulk of that is the new construction down the roads and stuff, and you're probably into, shoot, Craig, what do you think, a full two million by the time you're done with engineering and stuff at that point, right?
More than that.
Well, we already knocked off one and a half, I mean.
You're probably looking at two and a half.
Yeah. Cause you are reapplying some of the engineering things like that, and, you know. Now, if we did this in two phases, uh, Pete, would we be able to apply twice on the one-stop, even though it says one-stop?
It's one-stop, only, it, it is, is, is a, an annual, uh, program, so you could be applying next year as well.
Okay.
You know, we, we would certainly look at applying next year as well, if, if the project's still around, yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Drawing around some of the terms that Bob used to use, uh, tip type thing, is this anything to do with tip or no?
Tip is for roadway type projects.
Roadway only, okay.
Yeah, uh.
Unfortunately, it's not on the casino route, so we can't really use any, no. Glendale is, Glendale, Glendale is, and that's.
It's on the casino route.
Glendale.
We've got funding for Main Street, and it comes straight through Main Street.
Yeah, but, it's water. Finished, we already finished the water.
Water.
So, anyhow, so, a, again, I think we need a harder number, and we need to figure out if we're gonna be adding another election question or not.
Why would we add an election question?
If we're not sure of the, then we'd be borrowing the full million, which would require an override. But if we're gonna say we just authorize the treasurer to borrow in anticipation of, we could let it roll, because, you know, we won't know from the thing until potentially the fall. And then if, say, we got five hundred back, he's only borrowing five hundred, he would say, I'll just do a couple of band notes on that, and we'll keep it inside the levy.
That's assuming September, it would be favorable or?
Right, assuming, but my point is, if it's not, if we're not gonna assume that, then it's a million dollar number that's out, that's over the levy limit, and we'd have to come up with a funding source. I'm saying we can kick that to the fall, just do government notes until, at that time, until we get a decision from the state. It doesn't affect us because we're not setting the tax rate till then anyhow. You know, by the time we hear back on this grant thing, we'll have a decision to make.
So we're thinking like one point four is what we're at?
I think so, so I think if we're talking, I think we throw, you know, we figure a million. So basically, I think if the article is to complete pump house restoration in phase A of the, uh, district.
So at this point, we don't need to put a geographical change, would that be coming down the road?
No, cause all these ones are inside the current map, yeah. Right, Paul?
Right. Right. Let's go forward with that, the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Be emotional.
So would you say what we're talking about here, the pump house plus the, uh, just treating the six homes, seven homes?
I believe it's seven.
Seven that go for, you think, uh, we're gonna. Seven that go for, you think, uh, we're gonna throw a number of one point five out there? Peter?
I, I'm hearing you. I'm, I'm kinda hoping that Jen's gonna step in and tell me if the numbers work out.
Yeah, yeah, let me just check the, with contingency.
While she's doing that, uh, a question that came up, uh, about the, the, what, what your plans are for the existing building on that site? Is the intent to demolish that as soon as this project is over, or is it gonna stay there? And I, I, the impact is just on, on how it's reported to the conservation commission and such.
If we need it.
Well, whatever you think we need it for, if we don't need it, you know? We don't need it.
Well, it just becomes another maintenance item for you.
Right.
I mean, it, yeah, you could say I can store something in there, but it's a small shed.
Yeah, so include.
The sauna and bathroom.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that, uh, including, um, contingency, our, um, engineering services, um, construction fee services and, you know, contingency, I said it would be one point six.
That's, I mean, obviously you're not using the numbers in your thing here, cause we're not doing the larger percentage of this.
Right, yeah, so that, that was the whole system, so this would be just for a portion of it.
You're still down to one point six? Ryan, did you get a hard number on the ARPA? Was it in the five, four, five, four, seventy-five, something like that range?
Um, I'd have to double check.
Okay. Well.
Either way, we gotta make that happen. We gotta, we gotta go higher than low.
Right, so one point one is the, is the borrowing number.
Yeah. Well, we're probably one point one five, we have four fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have to change the referendum portion?
I think at this point, we don't put it to a vote. And we, we, when we sit down with advisory and Dick, et cetera, we say, look, is this the type of number? I mean, senior center is six million dollars, obviously it's a referendum vote. Hate to say it, we're at such a budget thing right now. One million isn't what it used to be.
My, my also question is if this is a vote, people don't understand what they're, they're voting, but we're, we're clean drinking water for these people over here. You know, this is kind of a safety thing, we have to do it.
It's not like that, we're pretty much under.
We're mandated to do a business, whether, whether, you know, they're funding it or not, or we're just raising taxes not for testing.
But you're talking about a vote, but what number to put in?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking, I don't think we need the second vote at the, we're not asking.
Vote for, for, you don't need an election vote.
Right, I don't think that, no. Um, and Don, you've been doing some research on this, what other funding source do you see for PFAS abatement? Everybody's got it right now, believe me. And they got a, they got a suit against DuPont.
There's infrastructure Monday, but.
I mean, your family's paying for the recap, or DuPont, right, they're paying for it.
Yes.
But I mean, is there some of that, I mean, is that, or is that gonna be like the opioid thing where everyone gets five dollars?
Yeah.
So we're not really expecting a lot when they divide it all down.
I wouldn't expect a lot.
No, no.
Okay.
Alright, we'll set this, we're gonna go for one point one million.
I think so, we'll get a firm figure on what's left in ARPA from, uh, from Brian.
That puts us in there, for advisory.
We're penciling one point one right now.
Okay, right, we'll do these guys.
We have that article already in the.
We have it in.
I think so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there is only one other question, if I could catch up before we go, um, was the NOI, um, notice of intent for the wetlands, um, permitting. Um, currently, we have that in draft form to be able to submit it, um, this week to you guys to review and get signatures so that we could be, and, um, presented at the COMCOM meeting on the seventeenth of April. Um, we could, um, pull out, you know, and just do phase A, but I suggest we do it all as one project. It's when you get approved for the permit, it's active for three years, you can always extend it. I think it's better to leave it as is, apply for the whole thing. So I just wanted to confirm that before I sent that over to John to get signatures.
Yep.
Yeah, it really has no effect, it is better to keep it all in there.
Okay.
Alright.
Before you leave, Peter, um, is it Yvonne and Craig are working on the, uh, review of the school?
It is correct, that is correct.
And.
You need, do you need me to step in on anything there?
No, no, we're just getting a sense that that's coming back rush slowly or something.
Alright.
Is that coming back shortly, you think?
That's, that's, that's the question, I will, I, I have to check in with.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Okay. Good night, guys.
Alright. Casino funding reallocation.
Yep, um, the original grant for two hundred, three thousand, one hundred, that can be reallocated with, uh, the application to the gaming commission. That was originally for sidewalk design along Main Street.
I thought we'd already planned to use fifty thousand, was it, towards the MVP? And then it's thirty thousand of so speak town work for the full eighty-two. Basically, our part of it was eighty-two, of which some was gonna be credited work by you all. And you have to track hours, et cetera, we're never gonna come up with fifty out of the casino money to repay that.
Yeah, fifty thousand's the maps, the cash match for that grant.
Right, now, the, but I also wanna get back to, I asked the question a, a couple of weeks ago. And looking for the answer on the first casino money that we spent the four hundred thousand.
No. We've, we've not been reimbursed the four hundred thousand.
Well, I want to know if we spent the four hundred thousand, I couldn't come up with a hundred thousand that we authorized. We had the rolling sign, we had a couple of crosswalks, we had.
Have we not been reimbursed because of the extension that we got in for the second funding stream from the casino mitigation? Or is it totally just behind on reimbursing? I mean, I think they were approved, if I remember correctly.
We were approved for a hundred, I'd like to know.
I don't know if you know that offhand, Brian or not.
Yeah, I'd like to know, A, what we're crediting against the hundred, and B, is there some money left that, hey, maybe we use some of that money towards this?
Right, cause this is upfront funding on our portion, right, and then we, we reimbursed.
Yeah, and they've not been very good at, right, we're already, the other MVP money that we paid.
Well, I'm just curious if, you know, like you're saying, if, if Brian just said we haven't been reimbursed the full hundred, what, have we been reimbursed, like you were saying, and
What have we spent?
Why have, why haven't we been reimbursed? Are, are they waiting for approvals for something else on our end? Was it tied into the second allocation of money?
Do they anticipate we'll spend the whole hundred first before?
Right.
We only write to one chapter.
Right.
And I hate to say it, they're not gonna bond through the information, they don't wanna send the money out.
For the hundred thousand, the, the, the twenty twenty-one traffic safety grant, we have, we got reimbursed twenty-two, three nineteen, and then sixty-five, four oh seven, so eighty-seven.
Okay.
Eighty-eight thousand dollars. The last reimbursement we submitted was about a year ago, four twenty-five, twenty-three.
Really?
And we got eighty-seven total back from that?
Yep.
Is that?
So that might be right in line with what we've been spending.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it sounds like.
So, can we still get the other thirteen thousand from that? If we come up, heck, let's go back to the crosswalk you talked about out here, that's about the right kind of money.
Well, that's, there's a second portion there, right? How much was the allocated in the second line?
No, this is the first one for a hundred, you only spent eighty-seven.
Right.
Right.
But he's looking for a vote tonight on what to do with that second, the two hundred and three, right?
Yep.
But if you didn't want that, we could also take the thirteen left over and add it to, you know? And leave more in the pot for later.
But I, I think they need direction from us that we wanna spend it on something.
Mm-hmm.
And where it's gonna go for them to approve that, that's source, right? So we wanted to do the match at, what, fifty? We talked about doing a, a crosswalk out here for twenty, maybe? That's probably on the high end.
I don't think that was high end, that's what I'm saying, I don't see why we can't do the crosswalk with leftover thirteen. If that's still, ask the question, is that twenty twenty-one money, if you authorize the hundred for us? Is it still there?
It's still available.
Right. If not, then we can come back and say, okay, we're gonna add it out of the twenty-four money, twenty-three money.
But that still, we still need to vote on something tonight.
I agree. So I'd make a motion to authorize redirecting fifty thousand of the twenty twenty-three casino match money towards the matching funds required for the MVP program.
But we, then we still need a hundred fifty thousand.
We gotta think of something else, but right now we gotta get that fifty over to it.
They're not gonna approve the whole two hundred and three without everything on the table.
True, or they need just something?
I think they'll prove. I think they'll prove smaller amounts.
Okay.
Okay, so then we come up with a plan for the extra hundred.
You know, we talked about doing the tourism underneath, you know, community planning. And there's tourism projects, and then there's a bunch of different things that we, well, I don't remember what they were off the top of my head, but, you know.
Yeah. Alright, let's put, let's put the, let's vote on this tonight, and then we'll put the second phase on for next week to talk about it again.
Do you think I'll vote with them?
Yep.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna, we, we gotta, we just wanna check on some other things, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna go with some amounts, like Craig's idea of the tourism, okay, that'll cost this, boom, boom, yeah. But it'll all have to be in the quarter.
Right, yeah.
It's not like unfortunately we can't do, like we have money required to do those two CRs up on Chaping.
Yeah.
It's gonna, but we can't spend the money there, cause it's not, nobody's driving there.
Do we remember offhand what that cost was to do the, the design study for the sidewalk?
The one that we didn't think was complete, is I don't think it really touched on.
The thing about getting reimbursed for that?
Just, yeah, get reimbursed for that, yeah.
Did we actually pay that?
No, cause it was one point one, I think was their project, engineering.
No, I think we did, we decided not to vote that because we knew the check wasn't coming from the town. We had a quote from Time Bond. And I said, until we see the other money.
Right.
Right, we'd be sitting on, yeah.
Oh, let's, 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 let's go with your, your motion there for the fifty thousand. So I'll second that, and then next week we.
Do we come up with the plan for a hundred and three, roughly? No, one fifty-three?
One fifty-three, yeah. Well, maybe, maybe plus the extra thirteen too.
Okay, all in favor?
Aight.
Uh, review the town meeting, we're gonna go, let's do the warrant. I wanna, I wanna request that we open the, the, reopen the warrant either this week or next week to place a, uh, warrant article in there for battery storage system moratorium, battery energy storage system moratorium.
Do we need a little more open, just in case Pat comes back with something else? Uh, put on the agenda next week, a vote to reopen the warrant, potential inclusion of zoning, zoning articles. Not what gives Pat a chance to maybe.
Alright, I'll, I'll put that on next week for both of them.
So we'll reopen next week.
Okay. Where are we going on the warrant now?
Hey, Don?
Yes?
It's Maddie from Plankford.
Right.
Um, I just wanna make a note that if we do move forward with the battery storage moratorium, the, I understand that there's been some, I saw the emails the past few days about the blue wave, um, but just to be clear, like the Glendale Road project won't have to follow that moratorium because it's already been opened.
And, and, I don't, I don't think, Maddie, I don't think it could follow it anyhow because it's, it's not a standalone, you know what I mean? It's, it's
Yeah.
subtly attached to the solar field, but they're talking about standalone. And looking at the past, uh, your, your, your meetings there, he's talking about not even involving solar. He's talking about drawing from the high, high tension wires down, storing it during the day and dumping it at night, so.
Yep, I just didn't want to get anybody's hopes up about Glendale Road, the impacts that this could have on it, so.
You know, I, you know, I know it's gonna put you guys on the, on the spot to have a, have to have a public hearing and all that and squeeze it in your timeframe, but I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the dates and figure out if we are, if it's, uh, doable by town meeting. Cause we still have to, we'd have to publish in the newspaper, we'd have to have our public hearing, we'd have to have it presented to you guys, um, and I think we have to go to town council too before it could go.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a pretty aggressive schedule for us, and we have quite a few public hearings coming up in April, so.
I know you can do it, though, I have all the confidence in the world.
Did you find a reference from some other town though that was?
I did, I did. I, I, I took a reference from, uh, Westbrookfield, I believe, in Medway.
Yes, I, yeah, I was looking at that a little bit, a little while ago, but I mean, still, this is a pretty big thing, so.
Hmm.
Alright, got it, thank you.
Alright, sorry, my kids are in the background, very excited to see the screen.
I actually tuned it in, thanks.
And Keith is down here at the other meeting, she's on.
Yeah, Keith is talking about you guys. Everybody's involved tonight.
Thank you.
Alright, town report, annual budget, prior bills, spending limits, enterprise.
A couple of ones got filled in, obviously since the COLA got done, uh, you see the nurse number came in now, so, you know.
But we have the budget.
Yeah, on the last page, they're probably helping us, uh, you know, now we know what the COLA is. Let's see, what did you, oh my gosh, Don, look at that, that's like an extra hundred dollars for each of us.
You're not gonna tell her, boy.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I think the other thing we talked about, although it wasn't really official, um, the board health coordinator, I think that number will be lower. You know, obviously somebody new coming in is not gonna be at, at that, but it does give you a little flexibility. And we certainly saw that when we interviewed for this position.
So do you think we should put in? Should we put in the shortfall, the, the projected shortfall?
It's gotta come from somewhere.
Mm-hmm. Do we have a line item?
No, we didn't put it in last year, so we gotta figure it out.
I think we should, I think we might as well just fund it basically, it's like funding regional dispatches, now we know our number.
Board health expense?
Hmm, I don't think so, I think we should put it down as shared services.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, add a line.
So it was eleven, ten five?
Cause I think it's gonna show up every year, so.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, how much was it?
Oh, gosh, the next year.
Twelve thousand something?
I think, yeah.
No, I don't wanna say.
Do we have a hard number from the ambulance over there?
No, they gotta send, they gotta, they're supposed, they were supposed to send something, so I haven't seen, we haven't seen it yet, so.
We've seen a little things change or whatever, Don, I don't, I don't know if I hold that twelve number hard and just, I hate to round up, but.
Thirteen.
I throw a little in there, yeah, yeah. Saying who knows that, uh, retirement changes, something like that, yeah.
So you have a new, a new line item?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, well, thirteen, we'll put thirteen.
Basically, it'd be like five eleven, five one oh one, oh three, shared services after coordinator, basically. It's all health stuff. And we've taken out of other accounts, so it's not really changing much. We dropped our legal on claim more than that, so.
Drop the liability, that, that assurance number is just getting crazy too, late benefits and inclusion. Long claim, we dropped that.
What do you want to do with information technology in the website?
That Dado storage added twenty thousand to the, it was that much, Greg?
For what?
That Dado storage added twenty grand to the account?
For our server?
Yeah. That's what you're showing here, went from thirty to fifty, and it says IT increased due to amount of Dado storage at the bottom. That wasn't the only reason for that jump, was it?
Don't remember, I don't remember what the cost was for that new server, I remember it being like.
That's like fifteen hundred a month.
Remember it being expensive and we were like, whoa.
Yeah. So we have two problems with the website thing. A, we gotta find a way to fund what Bob signed, and then B, going forward, A, paying for it, and who's doing it?
If, if we pay, if we pay the fourteen, then that pays for the redesign, or.
They do the work?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the upgrade to the central platform.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or we could say, no thanks, give us our money back, we can try, I don't know if they're, they're gonna do it or not, but we would still be left with needing to upgrade the website at some point, so.
I think the upgrade, the website needs to be upgraded, it's horrible.
Yeah, they gotta do it.
Yeah, if they're doing it, I mean, I have seen some of their upgraded ones and other towns.
Overhams looks a lot nicer.
Yeah, so.
And maybe the, the backend will be a lot easier to use.
Yeah.
But they'll take care of all the upgrades, the, all the stuff on their end will. We don't, we don't need to hire an IT person to come in and, you know, web designer.
No, and I think the advantage is they already have all of our information.
And get more, get more documents from the talent on the site too, as well.
We don't have to migrate it to a different company, that's true.
Yeah.
I don't see any other issues with the budget at this point, I think so.
So underneath the website, do we need to account for that extra ca, extra?
Unfortunately, that bill's inside this year, so we may have to go to reserve for it later in the year, find a transfer.
Okay, but.
I think we'll have quite a bit left in long claims.
That's a one-time cost though, right? After that, we're, we're, we're okay.
Yeah, then it's, then it's the, you know, recurring.
Okay, okay.
Of about fifty, four hundred, fifty-six hundred.
Yeah.
Plus, well, plus the audio eye, so it's.
Yeah.
So our, our ten grand budget is okay then?
Our ten grand budget is good for recurring annual costs, yep.
Yeah, and in May, we can touch on claim for a one-time charge.
One thing, right. Doorway, gas, gasoline, lighting, animal control, emergency management. Just gotta get to the ambulance number, I think that's gonna be the number, but we still have to say to them we're gonna exercise our one year.
One year extension, yeah.
You know? You know?
Should probably get that rolling in the next week or two, just so we have an idea.
Get it done. Anything else on that? One-day liquor license? Two-day liquor license?
Why don't we just fill that?
Are you, no, you're trying, you're trying to fool, you're trying. You're trying to liquor license?
Come with free cookies?
To the board, I have another application for the liquor license at the senior center.
Those people.
This is a, this is a recurring on every, I know, Tad's been here like every meeting.
Every week, they have a one-day permit.
Well, why do you think, why do you think Tad's here, he's going to the senior?
He wants the dates, that's right.
This is getting a little suspicious.
Yeah, so anyhow, Thursday, May second, from five thirty to nine thirty, they don't run it too late.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's it for?
It's a paint and sip fundraiser. You an artist, Ted?
A little bit.
Alright, there we go.
There you go, you're in.
So, I'm for a motion to. See all those paintings come out?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Aight, okay.
Look at those, what was Bob Ross, happy tree, is that it?
Little happy tree, little happy flowers.
Alright, what do you got for selectmen reports?
Uh, we met the building committee, met again this week, obviously, the focus on is recapping what happened at the forum they had last week. Uh, that was Thursday, and then planning the next forum. So, and they were very appreciative of the report, Brian is able to get reports of robocalls, you know, see how they're received, how many are actually listened to. And it was good information, it does show that we need, I think, to do a better outreach on getting people changing their numbers. A lot of the numbers are still landlines, people don't have anymore.
Is it still on our website? I remember Bob was trying to get it on the website, and then it disappeared for a while, the sign up?
I thought it was, but I think it's getting, you know, putting a notice in the scribe, putting a notice, having Kristen put something out there, whatever, you know, so. That was the big thing, uh, planning meets tomorrow night, right, Pat?
That's correct.
CPA meets tomorrow night as well, we have a couple of proposals to, to consider, and I'd like to formally mention the newest member of the CPA board. Colleague of yours at the company.
Yeah?
Will Snyder.
Oh, really?
Yeah, another big white fat.
A big white retiree.
And there's, this thing is retiring, that's right. He'll be serving as an at-large appointment from the moderator.
Uh, fiber optic committee is meeting tomorrow night at six as well.
No room at the inn.
I think we're meeting in here.
Got a key?
No, we're on the weather center.
Police negotiations, we went to the round table, and what else we got?
And there's some planning things, just wait for a while.
Wait, we're planning, we're planning on hiatus.
The planning piece on hiatus?
It's an island in the Pacific.
Yeah, they wanted to be a hiatus, but the budget wasn't.
I thought it was a hiatus, but it turned out to be a hiatus.
Like, what? Tricked me.
Yes, the town administration report?
Uh, fire department received a seventy-seven hundred dollar fire safety grant for government oxide detectors, hoses and nozzles. We received two applications for zoom operators, we will reach out to those applicants from Minnetec. Who reached out to us. About it, website, we talked about that.
Right, poles, lights, okay, I brought up a couple of weeks ago, that we talked about illuminating the flagpoles.
Oh, yeah.
Park and Rec was concerned about the ones that are at the park, they were gonna go to CPA, basically, for two hundred dollars to get things. I mentioned before that I found them online through the flagpole companies or whatever, and they're in the hundred dollar range at the worst. We have approximately, I think, nine or ten poles in town that currently have a flag on them, maybe less. I'd like the board to authorize up to a thousand dollars out of the selectman expense account. To get these solar powered light units for the town flags, basically. They clip on roughly, what, ten feet below the flag, solar power during the day and shine the light up at the flag at night. So, Craig has actually brought this up in the past about getting something like that done, they've looked at the ones that come at the top and come down, or whichever. But we have plenty of money expense, there's no reason to go tap the CPA fund for two hundred dollars.
Right.
Second. All in favor?
Aight.
Thank you. And so you and I can.
Okay.
Set up our ladder. Wow, we'll attach them.
Oh, we use the drone, we'll pull them up there with the drone.
Alright. Yeah.
As Don knows, so next Wednesday, we have our community immersion day with our consultants on the master plan from ten to three. So we'll have the van, that will be driving six of, you know, the planning board team plus VHB, and then we'll be here for lunch. I don't know, working lunch, so I think we're, with Tad's help and Joe Sibylle's help, we're all set with the logistics, so looking forward to that.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining relating to the police patrolmen's union. They've determined that a public session would be detrimental to our position.
Without.
Without return to regular session.
Second, John, tomorrow night.
I'll have him.
Greg Riverside.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.